First of all, I'd like to say thank everyone for coming out. I know it's warm, hot outside, at least it is cool in here. So, as everyone knows, that the town hall meetings are basically ran by you guys. We, I try to answer as many questions that I can, give you all as much information as I can, but if I cannot and not able to do that, I will get back to you once I find out. I was getting ready to tell everybody to cut their phone off and look at me. Okay, and we'll try our best to get back with whatever question that you had, and hopefully we can get them answered. I'll go over the rules again, I do it every meeting. We will not talk about each other, personal. If you have a comment or complaint, that's fine. If you want to, any village official is free play. I still don't like to have personalization, which means, you know, we don't talk. You may want to say about something that was voted on, that's different. But when we start talking about the person themselves, their character, this is not what this is for. So if you have a question or a comment about something that was done in the village, that's no problem, but we would not talk about each other. We will not harass each other. We would not go back and forth unless it's a constructive criticism. If it's constructive, fine, that's what we're here for. But outside of that, if you get up and say that so-and-so did such-and-such to me, we're not gonna, we're not gonna talk about that. So, without further ado, I have a few things that I wanted to bring up right before we get into the question and answer, period. One of them being the reason, this, yesterday was the first meeting we had this month. How many people actually came to that meeting last night? Oh, quite a few. Means I'm gonna be feeling a lot of questions. People have questions about that, so I'm just gonna wait until that period comes. But it was part, I just wanted to explain to you that that meeting was the first meeting, and it was scheduled that way way back in January when the mayor put out the calendar for the year. Just so you understand, we as trustees do not vote on a calendar. He possesses a calendar, and that's it. So we don't, we don't vote on that. Now, we can discuss it, but he puts the calendar out, tells us this is when we're gonna meet, and that's it. I didn't like the part where you called it a cost-saving initiative. To not have the meetings, and you had not having it because it's cost-saving, make it total cost-saving. Don't you get paid and everyone else doesn't, but it's a cost-saving. We tell our kids that same thing. Don't do as I do, do as I say. That's exactly what he's doing. Don't do as I do, do as I say. We all know that's wrong. If your children see you do something and you tell them that I can do that, that's, you preaching, basically hypocritically. So, if you're going to do that, then no one gets paid for that month, and have your pay be pro-rated for a month, for the four meetings that, or the two meetings, or the one meeting that we have. So, it is not cost-saving. If we have no meetings at all in the village, the mayor and the clerk gets paid because they get a salary. So, just wanted to let you know, we talked about that as trustees, and it didn't go anywhere. But that's something that we have to, we have to deal with. The second topic was, yesterday was the accounts payable. The last time we had a meeting on the June 28th, accounts payable was resented. It got a little controversial because there was questions being asked on why are we paying this? How much is this? And it got to a point where it, when the answers weren't being taken. And I didn't want to continue with a meeting until I get my answer. That's what you guys elected me to do, is to get answers, so I can come back and give the answers back to you, why are we doing this? I hate to come to you and you ask me a question, I tell you, I don't know how I've been spending the money. Then why do I have you here as a trustee if you don't know? So I kept asking, kept asking, till it got to the point where the mayor and a few walked out of a meeting. And in the meantime, the department's head left. Well, I, that's what I wanted to ask a department head about an entry in the accounts payable. I didn't get my answer. So I was gonna continue to find out because I had both people there. I had the mayor there, and I had the finance director there. The only two people I knew that could answer that question. But when he told them to leave, then there's no need for me to vote on something because I don't know where that money's going, and why do we get that particular accounts payable? Where could we be spending the money? That's what, that's what I'm there for, as a trustee, to find out that we're spending the money correctly. So that was the reason why, if you were there on the 28th of June, that escalated into that. Sorry that you guys had to hear that, but that's, that's government. If I just sat back and didn't say anything, and then we voted the money out, and I, and you asked me out in the streets somewhere, why did you vote that out? Do you know why you did that? And I told you, because everybody else did? So why do you need me? Why you need me here representing you if you're gonna, if I'm gonna follow along and not ask questions? Each and every one of us, every single day, have a, and every, more often than not, have a, come across a crossroads where you're gonna ask a question. Why is this that way? If someone tells you, just because? I don't know about you, but I don't, I can't deal with just because. Just because you say so, that's the way it is? No. So that's what happened. Simple. You can look at whatever videos you wanna look at, but didn't want, I was not gonna let it go any further. I still had the floor. Parliamentary procedure, which they call Robert Rules of Order, states that if you, if you have the floor, you have to relinquish the floor to move on with the meeting. I never relinquished the floor. I still had the floor, and I wanted my question answered before I did relinquish it. Tried to move on. Yes, I got a little voiceless, and I asked to answer my question. That's what happened. I'm standing right here in front of you, letting you know, that's what happened. Anything else? If you were there, you knew that that's what happened. If you weren't there, I'm telling you right now, and I'm sure it's being taped, that's exactly what happened. You know, it's not easy being in that chair, but you knew that when you got voted in, in that chair. So, that's something I just wanted to clarify. That's the reason why we did not have, but the meeting continued because we had enough trustees to make a quorum, to conduct business. But that's the reason why I did not say anything on accounts payable, and it wasn't passed, we passed enough to pay payroll and the liabilities that go along with payroll. So if there's any questions tonight about that, I'd be more than happy to answer. And lastly, we just, I just had a, we just had a public works meeting tonight. And in that meeting, there was a lot of things that were discussed. But does everyone here know what CDBG grant money is? Does anyone not know what CDBG grant money is? Community block grant funding. Community, community, block grant. Grant money. That money is given by the government for areas that are less affluent, for areas that are low, have low income. Each area in Illinois has a low-income area where it's located, where they don't fit into the average of that community. Each city in Illinois applies for that. And it's given based on, first of all, availability. Second of all, how big an area that you have that will qualify. We've been getting CDBG money since I can remember. However, and I'm gonna say this again, CDBG money is not limited to village. Any resident can apply for CDBG money, especially seniors, because they have a fixed income. So therefore, they qualify to fix their homes, especially when it comes to areas like windows, roofs, and infrastructure problems that will cause something later. You can apply for a CDBG money, and it's not coming, it's not part of the money that we get. We apply for it because we have the eligibility of low-income homes in the area. But you as a person, especially as a senior, can apply for a CDBG loan and put down what you have to do now. What happens when you're a senior, and you get the loan, it goes to the contractor. Money doesn't come to you. You have to get a contractor that falls in line, in other words, has to be certified. You get an estimate. They give you so much money based on that estimate. It may be 50%, maybe 100%, depends on where you fall, and where your income falls in line. So if you want to get a roof built or fixed, you would submit that, and you would submit it down at Bloom Township. Everybody know, does anyone know where Bloom Township is located? One, two. You guys don't know where Bloom Township is? Community block grant. I don't know about that private information. I know that you can apply for it, and it's, and it's, and it's treated on a individual basis, but as far as you knowing who actually applied for it, I, I couldn't tell you that because I would think that would be a privy information. I would think. I don't know. Just like, how much money did you get back on your taxes? So I don't, I don't know. I don't know what their, what their standards are as far as with the government or the state, but there's so much money given every year to the state, and the state distributes it, and that's one of the ways that you have to qualify. Whether or not we know who applied for it, I don't know. Whether or not we know how much they applied for, I think you can find that out. I think, but I don't know, because I really don't know anyone that actually done it except for a few people that I never went behind them to find out how much they got. I'm not saying that. I'm saying I don't know if it's public knowledge. I'm not saying that it's not public knowledge, but I don't know. I really don't. Why, would this, would it make a difference if your neighbor got CDBG money and you didn't? Okay, but if you apply for it, that would be the... Well, this is the first time you heard about it? Yes, you could apply for it. And they can, especially if you're senior because you already have fixed income. And then they'll tell you the guidelines. As I stated, you go down to Bloom. They have the paperwork there at Bloom Township, which is on 100 and, just, you know what Joel Road is at? I don't know the number, but Joel Road in Halston. It's across the street from Perry State. Okay, but 425... You know, but it's right, if you go, it's just north of Joel Road and Halston on the east side of the street. You go in there, you talk to them at the front desk, tell them exactly what you do, and they'll do that. Point number one. Point number two, you have homeowners here. Has anyone applied for a, I guess you would call it, a reduced in your home, your taxes? Has anyone applied for tax appeal? Okay. Does anyone want to apply for a tax appeal? Does anyone feel that their taxes are too high? Nobody? Anyway, that's where you would also go to file an appeal. What they would do is they would get the paperwork ready for you that you could take down to Markham Courthouse and submit it. All the paperwork. They ask you the questions, you just take that down with a copy. You take a copy for yourself because sometimes when you file that amendment, or the appeal, I'm sorry, you may have to come back and file another appeal. And it never go to the same place, but a different department, border appeal, appeals. So, and it has happened. I know for, for a fact that it, it has happened, and it's no, it's no harm if it costs you a dollar to do it. It don't cost you anything. That's part of being a homeowner. You pay your taxes for that. So if you feel that your house, and all that comes in conjunction with your village. Now, I'm gonna tell you something that you may not know either, but if you think about it, you'll understand. Every time a homeowner gets an appeal, the village gets less money. They can't, if you get an appeal and you save $500, that's $500 that you don't pay to the taxes. So that's less money the village, I mean, that's what, that's what that appeal is. So I'm just telling you information that may cut the village out, but you're a resident, and you shouldn't have to pay more if everyone else is paying less. And we all know that the property values have gone down in Illinois, especially in the south suburbs. Especially in the south suburbs. So who would you to go out there if you're a homeowner to find out as much as you can? So you can reduce some of that because taxes and this other thing are for real. Death and taxes will happen. So, okay. CDBG, no, I didn't say we weren't gonna get it. Last year, we didn't get any CDBG money. CDBG is... I don't know. I can't speak for individuals. Okay, the village got, lay your head upside your head. But CDBG money, CDBG money is, the village applied for it as a village. You could apply for it as an individual tax payer. You pay taxes when you had your home. You can apply for that separate. That don't do what the village gets. Last year, there was no money in the state, so therefore, they didn't pay out any CDBG money, private or municipal-wise. Every year, we apply for $400,000. Since I've been trustee, the most we ever got per year was $200,000. That's why you apply for more, right now, they're not gonna give you everything that you want. Motor fuel taxes, we get that throughout the year. CDBG comes one time, and that's whenever we apply, and they say yes. It comes one time, one check, that's it. MFT money comes all the time because that's what you pay at the pump. When you buy gasoline, you see the tax. Well, you don't see it, but it's built into the price of your gasoline. That's your motor fuel tax. That's what your, everyone that has it, that buys gas is gonna pay that tax. And it's supposed to be for the roads and infrastructure repairs for different areas. In our case, for Salt Village. That money can go to fix roads throughout the city. There is no such thing as a qualification. In other words, CDBG, you have to qualify. But for motor fuel tax, no, you don't. You can take, because we have taken motor fuel tax money and fixed a few streets. So, but that's supposed to be earmarked money too. You're not supposed to be able to take motor fuel tax and pay payroll. You're not supposed to be able to. It can be because the CDBG money is for infrastructure repairs. Motor fuel tax is for infrastructure repairs, streets. So yes, you can use that. You can. Yes, you can do that. Streets, sidewalks, pardon me? No. Your water, your water, and your water pays for your pipes. Your water is not part of CDBG or MFT. No. Your water is, that's why you charge the prices for your water. That water is separate, that money is separate. It doesn't pay for streets. Now, what happens if you got a water main break in the street? Then you wanna have that street fixed with MFT after the fact? Well, then that's the street. But the pipes and everything is paid through your water, your water bill. The water main break itself is paid through your water bill. You have, you have a part that says water and sewer. That's what it pays for, the infrastructure on those. The street itself, because a lot of times the water main break may be in somebody's yard. The street itself, that's gonna be, they're gonna gravel it over or whatever. They may put a pot, they may put a pothole fix in there. But to fix that whole street comes from MFT. And if you qualify for CDBG, it'll go there too. If they decide to do it in that particular area. Because they may not do, they may not do CDBG where you want it. It's gotta go for where it qualifies, and also where they fall at on the list. There's a list out there that goes for the worst to not, not so bad. So quite naturally, the ones that are really, really bad, the people are driving in and going down, they're gonna fix those first. With the CDBG, if they qualify in that area? If not, MFT? Because we get MFT all the time. We get that money maybe twice every other month. No. It goes, okay. And I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is when they decide to do an area in the village, and CDBG says, okay, this area that you're gonna do, or you find out yourself, and you submit it to them and say, okay, it's gonna cost $30,000 to fix that particular area. CDBG said, we're gonna give you $200. We give you $200. Now, you have to, you as the village has to make a decision. Do you use your MFT to pay it? Yes, it is. It's always MFT. The MFT, like I said, cannot be used to pay payroll, pay vendor bills. It cannot be used to do that. What they do, I can't, all I can do is ask questions and ask for proof. So, that's just like anything else. If this, if you have knowledge that it's being done, you need to let us know so we can go ahead and track it down, if you have that knowledge. But I can't go in there and say, wait a minute, someone told me. I could find out what the CDBG and MFT money is being used for. And I can tell you right now, it is being used for infrastructure repairs to qualify areas. MFT, the whole village is, is qualification. CDBG, it's a difference. This map here, if you can see it, and I'll pass around, please don't tear my map up. I'm gonna pass this around, everybody can get a look at it. Everything in yellow is qualified through CDBG money. In other words, that area, you can utilize and use whatever CDBG money we have that's coming in. Everything else, MFT. So, you know, it has to fit into a certain area. If you feel, if you know that, and I'm serious, if you know that CDBG money is being used other than, that I need to know. I need to investigate that. Your trustees need to know that, because I'm not aware of it. But MFT also cannot be used for payroll. We didn't have a block grant last budget. Didn't it say that we got CDBG money in? Didn't it say that? Then there was no fund, it didn't go anywhere. If we didn't have, if we didn't get any money, then quite naturally, everything we spent for infrastructure came out of MFT. Came out of that. There wasn't, CD, okay. We do not get a check from CDBG. It goes to the contractor. Remember I said about, we didn't do your house? You don't get that check. That goes to the contractor that you, and they pay him half until it is done, pay him another half. Robinson Engineering is the one that makes sure that we have a qualified contractor. And that money is paid to, the village don't get, that money, there is no account. There's an account for MFT, but there is no account for CDBG. Because we don't even, we don't even get the check. We get to look at the stub, but we don't get the check. Okay?
I have seen nobody around my house, and I'd like to know. Are they done, or are they...
No, they're not done.
Well, then we know. Are they gonna pull something?
That's a good question. Let me explain this to you. And I'm gonna try to do it the best way. If you see the smoke in your house, you have a leak. So if it comes out of your basin in the ground, if it comes out of your sink, comes, you have a leak. Because it's coming up through the sewer gas. You'll see it on the, in the street. Where your sewer goes out into the street, you'll see smoke coming up out of the street. You'll see it. If you see it in your house, there's somewhere, someplace in your house that's not being protected by the sewer. What protects it from coming up to the, in the toilets, is that water that's in your toilet. Sink is your, is your, is your, u-joint coming up through the sink. But if you see it, that means you got a leak. If you see it in your house, you got a leak somewhere. It may come out through the top where it vents so you can, so your water can go down. Everyone knows what I'm talking about, that little, I guess a stainless steel or whatever, someplace that's PVC, yeah. If you see it come out of there, that's fine, that's great. That's where it's supposed to go. That's where it's supposed, that's the only place it should go. But you'll see it in the neighborhood, you see smoke coming up out the sewers in the neighborhood. Now, when you're not know whether it happened, I, I, I can't answer that because I don't know. I today saw Robinson Engineering in the neighborhood, and I kinda figured they was out there doing that. But did they say anything? No, I didn't ask anything. No, I don't know where they're starting, where they're going to end. Have no idea. But I do know they're there. Can I take his question first, or I'll take yours? Yes?
There's a block on 224th Street, from Brookwood all the way down to Murphy. And then that whole block of Murphy going toward 223rd Street, that is in dire need of repair. Whole bunch of problems. Now, question is, once we go through the MFT and CDG, CDBG, and we fill out the application and everything, how soon can that block be done?
First of all, that block, as I stated earlier, that block has to be in that lineup. I put, I call it lineup. Where it falls is when it'll be done. Soon or later, it's gonna come up to the top, but right now, I don't know. I don't know how bad it is. It's bad, but I'll tell you right now, north of Salt Trail, between Galene and Merrill, you got some bad, bad areas. That's worse than that. So I'm sure other areas, probably south of 223rd Street and west of Torrance Avenue, over there, Talandas and there, not Talandas, Yates, and areas like that are bad too. So it just fall, wherever it falls at. But right now, if we don't get CDBG money this year, we still have to prepare some of those with the MFT money. And it's gonna be done on a need basis. But soon or later... But soon or later, that's, no, that's, that's another conversation, because I think we should be start, be fifty-something years old as a community. Should start doing something. Yes, Larry?
Yesterday, I asked a question. I wish, I want the people in this room here to understand what it was, and I want you to answer it. It's a question and then I, it's a three-part question. One, are we broke? Two, understood yesterday, and it was brought to my attention by your village, what is his title?
Administrator.
Village Administrator. That that was a no question, that that shouldn't have never came up. And you discussed it at length on should we spend more money? What money? The question first is, do we have any, or are we broke? And two, let's spend some more money we don't have. You know, I understand where you are, Mr. Burgess. I don't believe, I, I really don't like you playing into that conversation. That's a waste of time. We don't have, what did that, what was it called, chaos? Kiosk. What did that actually cost us too? That we don't have, and we spend time in talking about it. And three? Our board is divided. It's divided, I mean like, I was amazed. I saw us actually get a favorite week, what was it, three weeks ago now? A favorite week because the divided board fell in our favor with the mayor being stumped. You know, I'm going, what is going on with the side, this side, I have to call it because it is divided? To where we're not standing for righteousness. We actually had it to where a vote went out, this is four, sorry. A person was put into office on a vote for the three. People had to stand up and remove themselves because they didn't agree. I applaud those people. What is going on? I mean, I understand where you're at, but I don't think people understand where they're at. Let the people know these things. You can talk about smoke coming out the ground all you want, that's a waste of time for me. Talk about the issues that are going on. The things that you plan on doing or what we can do or can't do. Because as it stands, I couldn't believe, and I must say it, that a vote went out against a child molester in his favor. He got elected, can I finish, I didn't mention a name?
No, but you're being personal.
I didn't mention a name.
But you're being personal. I'm just, I, I gotta keep it real, Larry.
I understand, I understand, but see, this is what's going in South Village. You know how personal it is? The people are being overcharged for water. Given less good water. And it's not talked about? It's not talked about. They all ought to drink the water and find out for themselves, pay the bills and find out for themselves. This is ridiculous. You know, those are the issues that I want to hear about. All this smoke coming out the ground ain't gonna change nothing with the finance. Because this time next year will be, if we're broke now, what are we gonna be next year? Broke?
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, first of all, the reason why I asked, answered the question about the smoke? It's because the resident asked the question. So I, there's nothing that I chose to talk about, this is not about me, it's about you guys. So if they have a question, quite naturally, they have the right to ask that question. What's important to you may not be important to someone else and vice versa. That's why I asked and answered, I'm sorry, that's why, because I said, any questions? Now, are we broke? When you say broke, does it mean that we have no money or is it that we're not able to pay our bills? No, I'm asking you. Is your, because I can tell you either one. Is broke, is your definition of broke is we don't have any money? Or is it, and that's why I'm asking you? Or is it that we can't pay our bills?
Why the kiosk, tell me something.
I didn't, I'm asking. No, I'm asking you, Larry, could you tell me, because there's a difference. There's a difference in what we can pay and what we have. But that wasn't your question.
It's a question now.
Larry, you're jumping back and forth, I'm trying to answer your question the way you asked me. I just want clarification from you, and that's all I'm asking, because I'm not gonna sit here and tell somebody the wrong thing. Your definition, if you can tell me, what do you mean by are we broke? Do you mean that we have no money or do you mean we can't pay our bills? Which one do you mean?
We obviously are paying our bills from Peter to Paul, that's obvious. But can we afford kiosks? Can we waste almost an hour's time talking about something we can't afford?
But Larry, you can't, this is America, you can bring up whatever you want to. We can't stop somebody from, from, from bringing something into the village if it's what they want to bring. We have the decision to decide whether or not we want, we want that. That's what we're here, to hear what they have to say. To tell them, we don't want to hear what you guys say, we ain't got no money, that's no, that's not how you run a village. That's not how you run anything. You can't be, do we have money? Yes. Are we able to pay our bills? No. So I don't know what else it is that you're asking for. If that's the answer to broke, I don't, you get ready to go? Okay.
It makes sense to you on what you say?
Yes, it does, because we, we, we do have money.
Can we pay our bills?
Okay, so I guess your other, your other questions you don't want to ask, you don't want those answered. What does the kiosk cost then? Also, is the board divided and there was something else you said was, was, was voted on four to three? And, you know, but you don't want those answered, I'm sorry.
They need answers.
No, I'm asking, you asked the question, Larry.
I know the answer. If you ain't got no money, you can't afford to buy something, and you do it anyway?
It's called, Larry, you're older than I am, it's called credit. That's why they have credit, so you can pay later. Anybody in here does, there's no way where everybody, anyone, does anyone in here not have credit? Not have, they have, they paid cash for everything that they have? If that's the case, they wouldn't own their home. Because how many people in here have their, have no mortgage on their house? One, two, three, four. So everybody else got a mortgage.
We got 300 and what is that listed in this paper? Ninety-some people have foreclosed with empty houses. We got, we only got 10,000 houses.
No, we don't have 10,000 houses, Larry?
What was that, uh, no, 10,000 residents.
Maybe. Maybe. So, I'm just saying, I'm not gonna, I mean, I know that you may want your question to be a certain way, but this is the fact. You're gonna always owe. Now, out of those six people or whatever, is anybody debt-free? Who is debt-free, owes nothing? One. Two, that's great. That means you owe nothing, you don't have a credit card, you don't have a loan, you don't have anything. So you got three people that, that's nice. So, but I do know that I have a, I have a mortgage and I have debt. So, but that was the question on that. The kiosk, if you were here, that's a dead issue. So, you didn't even have to ask that question, that was a dead issue yesterday. When I'm trying to listen to something, I can't hear what they're saying, I'm through.
An hour's worth of dead issues.
We can't stop it, Larry, you have to entertain anything that comes up here. This is not, please believe me when I say this. And I mean this wholeheartedly, this is not a dictatorship. Where you gonna tell me what I can and can't do as far as bringing it to the village? It is not contrary to popular belief, this is democracy. We're not going back forth. We're not, until you ask, you asked your questions, then you want to, then you want to ask some more at the same time you ask, I'm going with what you say. I'm not going, because I got other people here, they didn't come to just hear you. Board divided, you know it's been divided for the last two years now. Is it gonna change? Okay, so you're asking, answering, and I don't know what you're talking about, someone got hired with a four to three vote. Or something, you said about a board voted four to three to do something. Appointed?
Yes.
Well, they, majority rules. Four, three? Self, self, you know, it's mandatory.
He got in, is he still there?
Who is he?
I'm trying not to say no names as you suggested. My God, the people.
No, he's not, if you're talking about the person that was appointed for Ezra? He's not, he resigned the next day.
That's what the people need to hear.
They heard it.
Not everybody.
Okay. Who's next? Oh.
Okay, so my question is, and, and I, I kind of talked to the Parks and Recs, they're right there about it. I intended on coming to the meeting yesterday, but I want to put it out here now since I didn't make it yesterday. So, this past Sunday, I rented the community center. And we had a great time, but there's a hundred dollar deposit, which I'm okay with. There's also a charge per hour that you're in the room, and I'm okay with that. What I am not okay with is the fact that none of that money goes to Parks and Recs. So you're telling me we have no budget for Parks and Recs? There's no money in our budget for Parks and Recs? But you're charging me to rent the community center, which hosts Parks and Rec? However, our senior center, only available to the seniors?
Certain seniors.
No charge? So, don't get me wrong, I love the seniors, but our youth are in trouble. And we're not putting anything into them. And I think that is ridiculous.
Well, I'm glad you spoke and said that because just so happens the Parks and Recs director is here. I'm gonna let him answer your question after this is over with, because we don't, I don't want any. Any, no, no, there, Larry, there you go. I don't want to infr- infr- infracture as far as, um, open meetings act. So, we're gonna, we're gonna let him answer that to you. However, if you don't get an answer, you can always come to the meeting next Tuesday at the board. And tell, and, and let them know. But I'm sure he can answer that question for you and.
I've already talked to him.
Okay, but.
And he gave me clarification, but I just want the rest of the residents to know the fact that we're paying for a community center.
Okay.
And Recs gets nothing.
So what you should do, and I'm just giving you my opinion? Is not complain to the Parks and Recs director, is complain to this board to find out where your money's going. Tell your mayor that you don't feel that it's going where it shouldn't be going, and let them know, and put that on the record. Put that on the record and let them know that, you know, or ask the question. They have to answer, ask the question, don't let them tell you to go back to the Parks and Recs director, you tell them. Is that money that I'm paying for rental and use and everything, is it going into a line item for Parks and Recs only? They him and her, you keep asking until you get the question. Yes, ma'am?
When it comes to those guys that all resigned because somebody was appointed? I know they resigned, then the head, he resigned. Is there a department there now to help our fire and policemen with accidents and stuff? Is there somebody there to help with directing the traffic and stuff? Uh, do we have that department at all now?
We still have Ezra, Homeland Security. You have three people that are on that department. One be the head and two other people that would help. They have so far been able to be on site. When it's gonna, when it, because the two, there are two people that don't have a job, so therefore they're available 24/7. It may come a time where you're gonna have to be here, and then you're gonna have to have something else that happens somewhere else. Well, we have what they call mutual aid. We can always call other departments from other municipalities that come out and give us a hand. Yes, I mean, but we may need this area or this to be taken care of, we may need three people there, that's all we got. So then down the street, something else happen, we may need, that's when we get mutual aid. Okay, um.
You know I got a question. I want to follow up on Tammy's question, uh, just to give her some information that, um. Anyway, the senior center? Even though only certain groups could use it, and they don't look like me? They also have a line item in the budget. Senior, senior committee does. And not only that, they have $2,500 in the bank that's not turned back over to the village. Am I right, please, they got $2,500?
Do you know that for a fact?
I know that for a fact.
Okay.
So, uh. Now, now you tell me why taxpayers can't use the senior center. You go over there and pay to use the community center, and it's not, and the money's not put in for the kids. Now, something's wrong with that picture altogether.
But it's. No, I'm, I'm saying, you, but. Sweetie Will is the most oil. If you come when we have the meetings and ask those kind of questions, and they have enough people to keep doing it? Either they're gonna have to do one of two things, if I have to, address it or not address it. But we don't say anything, and we, we tried to at one time and they shut that down. I know there was some seniors that tried to ask for their day and they shut it down. They shouldn't shut you down, keep coming back. Bring your friends, bring your neighbors, bring the citizens of the village, make them come out and make them answer your question. But you say it, and then they, they sit you down, and then it's over, they accomplish what they did, what they set out to do. They set out to not answer your question, because it's a volatile question. The question is very volatile, so what I have to do is if I, damn if I do it, damn if I don't. If I answer the question, then I'm gonna have some feedback, and if I don't answer the question, I'm gonna have some feedback. So you got to put their, their feet to the fire and say, okay. It started out that way, but then I saw it dissipate. It started out with three or four people, then it dissipate, dissipate, now it's gone. Guess what, they still do what they want. So you have to continue, if you want something bad enough, fight for it. It's your money, fight for it.
Well, it's common knowledge that a file, a file, uh, claim has been filed against with the Department of Human Rights. For discrimination against certain people here.
Okay.
So therefore, we can't keep talking about it.
Okay, but you brought it up.
To address, I'm just, I was just trying to give Tammy some.
Okay, but I'm just saying, but, okay, we can't be, but I'm just saying, and this is just period. That is common knowledge, you just keep, I, I, me myself don't take no for an answer. Explain something that I, okay then.
Okay, my next, my last question is because I gotta go.
Oh, you gotta go, no, see, you, you gonna say what you gotta say, then I get ready, I'm getting ready to bring a presentation on. And you should stay for that, because it does involve our youth.
I, I, you know why, I'm, I'm, I wasn't about to.
I just saying, it does involve the youth, okay, go ahead.
For last this month, I've been asking for the, uh, uh, supporting documents for the $825,000 that Governor E. B. Young has reduced us. As I understand it, it's available, but I sent a four request, they say they have no documents responsive to my request. So I wanted to try to get a copy of that $825,000 that nobody seems to have. In that case then, I have a bunch of questions about why that bill has not been paid out. So I'd like a copy of that $825,000 in rights that the government says that Governor E. B. Young has been reduced to. Why can't I get a copy? Even with the four, the employees say they don't have it.
That's why.
The mayor said it's gonna be on the website, so I haven't got it.
That's why you keep coming.
I've been doing it for six months.
Keep doing it.
Oh, my God.
You're not, you can't, okay, so you're gonna take no for an answer, because they say this, they say that? We don't have it right now, we'll get back with you? There was a question asked yesterday about the, um, um, mold in the, in the police department. The answer was, we working on it.
Well, Judy gonna.
I, I, but the answer was, we working on it. But, but, but then, but then guess what, that was it. We're working on it, we're gonna see this, and that was, that question was originally asked back in June. Okay, so, so, but if you can accept that answer, there's nothing you can do, but you have to accept that answer.
Every Tuesday, I'll be back asking.
There you go, that's what you have to, that's what the other means. Okay, um, at this time, 'cause these guys here have been sitting here patiently, um, wanted, they came, they came to me today and they asked, could they put on a little small presentation? Um, these are your youth in the village. They wanted to show you what it is that they're trying, that they've been doing on their own, on their own. And they wanted to give you a little, um, sample, what it is that they're doing out there rather than being out there creating mischief. They want, they're basically, I can say, auditioning for our, uh, Public Works, uh, director, I'm sorry, Parks and Recs director, that they can get a little space or get a little program started or something that they, we can help them out with. But they wanna show you what they've been, um, doing on their own, I guess, in their neighborhood, 'cause I don't think it's up at the village, at the community center. But they're headed by a young man whose mom is already involved in the village. And like I stated, it was done today, so I told him, yes, we'll have a, carve out a few minutes. So without further ado, and I want him to explain before they get started, what it is that they're about to do, because like me, a lot of them didn't know, I don't know what pop dancing is. But I do know about it back in the day because we used to see it on television, but they calling something else now. So, without further ado, I'd like to bring up Mr. Cornelius Edwards before he brings them out, and let him explain to you what it is that they're getting ready to do. Come on up, sir.
Hello, um, my name is Cornelius, and I dance with my friends around the neighborhood to do something positive, stay out the streets and stuff, if I wanna do nothing bad, and keep a good mindset, um. And we here today to just give a, a sample of what we do. And when we do it outside, like kids stopping stairs, so we could, um, target the young ones and help them out, and get them something positive to do, and not just walk around, um, wanna do bad things 'cause they bored or something, you know? And we just, we love doing it, so. And, um, before I all started, it was at, um, school, 'cause it was me and my friend, Ayele. And I just got there, 'cause I, we just moved here a couple months ago. And she asked me, do I wanna do a talent show, and so we started doing it around the, even around the school. People were looking, always making a big crowd around us while we practiced. And then we won the talent show eventually, and it was just something positive, we loved doing it, you know? So, thank you for your attention.
My name is Ayele Hale, uh, yeah. Uh, we were seventeen, you know, he already said the vocal stuff, but like, I was just going through Facebook, and so, you know, I was like, hey, why don't we, I noticed that he always, Joe, he always does like highlights, and so I'm like, why don't we give like a highlight of the youth? 'Cause like she said, I always, I even worked at the library for a couple months for like an intern, and I noticed it's always like the seniors, like they're like, senior night, seeing, I've never heard like anything about the youth. And we've always struggled, even when we were practicing for the talent shows, like, man, we wish we had somewhere that we could, Hurs or anything. It's like, if we find somewhere, it's like, oh, we gotta pay a hundred dollars to practice here, it's like, wow. So it's like, all we had was my house, and so now that it's hot outside, we're like, well, we should just go outside, and then we could probably get the youth to probably just, maybe they'd wanna dance with us. And so, we did a video the other day, and you know, we got a lot of views than what we've had before, and we were really proud of ourselves. So I decided to send it to Joe and get the word out that, hey, the kids in the village really like dancing, and they really like what we do, and then maybe we could influence more kids to do what we do, and it'd be fun.
Do you need the mic? Could you have your own music?
Yes, we have our own.
Oh, I can do that when she, give it to me. No, put it up here, you sit on top of this table right here. You need more room? Oh, you gonna be right here? Okay. As I stated, you know they're auditioning for Trustee Jones. So.
Steve, they're having technical difficulties, anybody having wifi on their phones, they can use.
Yeah, put your name.
They were supposed to use mine, and I didn't know my phone was on watch.
What song do you want to get?
My, I think you're.
You got it?
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to communicate.
All right. What's it down?
Um, it's just a beat, there's no words, so I.
It's okay if I can make your. Yeah, go.
Yeah, it's good.
You got another one? Gary, move your phone.
Would you be able to play for us, please?
You said that was easy?
No, I said it was cool.
Oh. But that was, okay, they're, they're, they're learning. Who is the one that's doing the choreography? Who is the choreographer? Oh, okay. That's great. So now, you guys, since I appealed for you, are you guys ready to move forward and, and, and teach other people in the neighborhood? Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try my best to see if we can do something. But that's, that's great, that's something, 'cause everybody doesn't play basketball, everybody doesn't, you know, play volleyball, whatever. Youth wanting to have something more to do than just a cliche, that's great. That's great.
Your names, you all have a name?
They'll be on stage.
You want the name of the group?
Two S.
Two S.
Yes. You wanna run it? Wouldn't they have to put in an application with them?
Well, we have to, we have to, first of all, get, to get the Public Works, I'm sorry, the Parks and Recs director involved. He has to do that, but we're gonna talk about that later.
Yeah, yeah.
But that, you trying to. And you know, these are volunteers.
I'm volunteer.
You heard that, don't take it. You heard that, so it's, and just so you know, when you turn around and look for volunteers, you see us, you understand, somebody else said that they gonna help, so. Um, okay, let's move on, that's great, you guys, yes, sir, do you have a question, yes? Now, when you say improve, you mean get new equipment and stuff, or just improve what we have, or? We, get new equipment?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you were also talking about, uh, the, uh, well, let's go with the first part. That's what we've been trying to do, that's what your Parks and Recs representative, trustee, Jones has been trying to get more money for Parks and Recs, so we can have more programs, something that we have been trying to do for the last almost two years. And right now, we're being told to have money, but we continue to spend it on what the majority of the board that votes spends it. We need to put more, we, we need to put more money towards the youth, if you expect the youth to do anything different. You have to give them alternatives, to get them off the streets. And out of, out of harms way, because the island, you know what happened, you guys are young, you standing around long enough, somebody gonna try to come recruit you for something else. So, yes, we have, I know you don't go to the meetings, your, your mom, she, um, we have to do something for the youth, if we don't invest in the youth, this community is going down, period. Then you have to invest in the schools, we have to give the challenge. If there's no challenge, you have no, 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 nothing to do but fall the wrong way. That's why we try to, and we still, we gonna succeed. We're going to get money for them, 'cause we're gonna keep asking why, keep asking you why we spend it. Well, yes, infrastructure is important, but I, youth is more important. Because if the community has nothing to offer, they didn't have nothing to offer to the community but mission. So, we, we, yes, that's one of the reasons, I'm glad you asked that question, because the basketball court used to be next to, I guess, behind Waver, you guys know where Waver School is at? Used to be a basketball court. Do you know that? Huh? But the speed up. You hear anybody? Okay, you know, you know where Waver School is on the 1215? You know where that playground is located? Used to be a basketball court over there. Powers to be, at the time, felt that we shouldn't have one over there, 'cause it was causing havoc in the neighborhood. So we built one right here. And that's how that got built, because it was right by the fire, they tried the police department, and I said, okay, well, we can control situations. Little did they know, if you gonna sell, no, hope you're ready here. They gonna sell, no. You don't necessarily mean 'cause all the kids are right there playing basketball, they gonna sell, they gonna sell wherever they gonna sell at. So, I know you guys have bombarded with that every single day. People walk up to you, try to recruit you, try to, to show you where you can make that money. But it takes a person, takes your parents, to be in your life, like this young lady here, to make sure, because this is out there, peer pressure is out there. So that's why we need to step up our programs and bills, to have something to offer. Because sooner or later, if you don't, they gonna get you. So, I just wanna let you know, we are out there trying to do that. We're out there trying to get enough money set aside to get these programs started. At least have them. Then after that, we have to charge a little bit, but the program is running, and we can show us successful. That's what we have to do, is trustees, and sell it to the board. So, just wanna let you know, you're not by yourself, so we are trying our best to do something other than what we have right now. Anybody else have any questions? You guys were great. I like to see this, I like to see something like this. And young lady, I don't know how long you've been doing choreography, but that's, you had to start somewhere. All actors, all choreographers, Debbie Allen and the rest have started just where you're at right now, neighborhood. So, don't ever let someone tell you, oh, man, you know, that don't, that, that, that's sycophantic, really, what you're doing. I'm serious. So, but they do that so they can shame you away from your path and bring them back to them. Jealousy is hard, it is, it's peer pressure out there. And if you can overcome that, you can overcome anything, this is gonna happen. Don't think that you're by yourself, each one of us, each one of us went through that back in the day. Some of them more than others. So if you can find an alternative, we don't have a lot of programs, we need to get more. And if we can't, that's our job, to take control and to help our youth. Anyone that's not youth, have any more questions? Okay, look at that, do you guys have any other questions other than just that? What about you, Pac-Man? Porky Man's not in here, just wanna let you know. I got rid of him when I came in. But is there any other questions? Anyone else have any questions? Really, you gonna wait till I get ready to close, and then you gonna ask all these questions at the last minute? Yes, ma'am?
How many, uh, part-time police officers were fired, or haven't even been hired at this point?
Zero.
Oh, 'cause I heard three at one meeting, and then.
Seven, two behind.
Five, and then.
If you notice at the, think about that, the last meeting we had. We voted, okay, it was a vote taken, a ordinance that, uh, uh, introduced to hire or to have the part-timers instituted. 'Cause they claimed there was one, I never saw one. I never saw one, and I've never seen, we had the ads, but anyway, it was, it was, it was introduced and was voted on four to three. I give you a guess, I never went. And to introduce part-time police officer here in the village. I saw the qualifications, the qualifications had nowhere on there that says that you have to be a law or a ex-law officer. You had to have a high school diploma, you had to have a clean record, you had to take a psych evaluation. But there's, and then, um, it did say they will train. You'll be trained. Oh, they have to train, they have to train. But they said, it doesn't say anything that you must be coming in trained, it said we will train. So, go ahead.
Okay.
Natasha, I'm sorry.
If I had been a limited number of police officers, or if a cookie I be sharing's gonna step in, like they, um, they're gonna report, I, so, you know, what's gonna happen?
She, her question was, by the.
By being a limited number of police officers, are the Cook County sheriffs gonna step in like they are doing over the four heights? Or what's gonna happen?
She, her question was, by being a limited amount of police officers here in the village, would we have to go to Cook County? Cook County only comes in when you have no department.
Well... Does they have to? I'm just asking.
No, no, they were like four heights, four heights had to eliminate because they couldn't pay. They didn't have the money to pay, yes. And they got rid of police officers, and the way I understand it, it's more cost efficient now for the, for them than it was when they had their offices. So every town, you know, but you're still gonna pay as a town, because the sheriff's police and doctors gonna come out there and police your area. You gonna pay how much you paid your officers now. But they gonna do as much as your officers now. They come out here, catch a speeding car, tow somebody, well, they walk up and do the actual investigation. Now, they're there to write tickets. And they're there just to intervene crime. As we all know, police officers do not stop crime. I've been saying that. They don't, they come on the scene afterwards. And depending on what kind of crime it is, if they have it, all you have to do is look at it. If they're really trying to catch somebody, they're gonna even come with their lights on. They'll pull up and try to catch. But if they want the scene to be gone by the time they get there, they put the sirens on, the lights and everything, let perpetrators get away. But they don't want that to counter, because they don't want what's gonna happen again. That they get shot at or whatever. So... I'm not, I'm the real man.
In the last ninety days, crime has been noted in South Village as being down. This is a noted fact. And yet at the same time that this is going on, we hire more police to stop what? The crime is down? This doesn't make sense again. We can talk about it all day long. But when it don't make sense, it don't make dollars. And if it don't make dollars, it don't make sense. So, we don't need to make the police. I understand the four to three vote, which is another way. Those are the things that I wanna hear about. Four to three. Talk about it.
But you go to meetings, I mean, what is it that you, I mean, four to three is four to three. It used to be five to one. It used to be five to one, I'm glad we now get three. Maybe if we keep on going, it may be even different.
I feel it will.
Well, that's your opinion. Your opinion is not, doesn't make it happen. People make it happen. People make it happen. So, you know, it sounds good, it sounds great, but until people make it happen, this is what you're gonna do. This is what you're gonna do. Oh, okay, Judy has a question.
Larry, I disagree with you.
Thank you.
We do need police officers, we are down. The hiring of part-time, it was my understanding that these would be police officers maybe from Lynnwood State or surrounding towns that would do this part-time here in South Village, so they're already trained. The idea of that, I couldn't argue with because it was a good idea if the union were going on with it. And the reason I say that is because you wouldn't have to pay for the psychological, you wouldn't have to pay for the training, you wouldn't have to pay for any of that stuff.
Why pay for the need?
Because they already have it. It's an extremely expensive thing to send somebody for everything that you need to walk in the door and put a badge on your chest. It's extremely expensive. I disagree with anybody on the street that walk in and they're gonna train. Who are they? Are we gonna have a police chief or a village administrators with the training? Then we're gonna be drunk. Big drunk. I am for our police department one hundred percent as far as part-time police officers. If it's the way it is being said it is going to be, I am against it one hundred.
It's not broken, then you gonna fix it anyway.
It never hurts to help a situation. If you need some volunteers, we're not doing that. If we're...
Crime is down.
If we, uh, you say crime is down, well, maybe crime is down in an area. But our, our... Fires are up in the, they won't.
Only crime we got is in City Hall.
Our, our arson is up. There's other things that are up. And, and, and anybody that has the experience and the knowledge in that area is at home. So, I, I feel that as far as the police department goes, I'm still with them one hundred percent, I will continually back them one hundred percent. I'm not saying we're a hundred percent perfect. Do we have things that need to be cleaned up, straightened up, and all that other good shit? Yes, we do. But in the meantime, we have educated people that are interested in what's happening in our town. And that matters to me. They're protecting the businesses, they're trying to protect us, and they're not getting the additional help that they need from right here in this world. And I think as long as we have higher-ups that have a negative attitude toward our police department, that we aren't gonna have a problem. But then again, all things change. So, hopefully in the not too distant future, that will change.
Okay, I mean, this, and I'm a little Larry left, but... No, really, because that's what Town Hall is about. Everybody has an opinion. It may not be what you wanna hear, but this is what they came out for, just like in Village Hall. I got tired of hearing, well, you can't ask that question, or that's got nothing to do with this. When did people ask that question? People weren't gonna today. They have an opinion. They're taxpayers, they wanna talk about what's important to them. We cannot direct a person to talk about what we think is important. That's not a democracy. So, we have to look, and that's what we was talking about, bringing businesses in. You cannot, unless you have something on the record that shows that you can't have that kind of business, they can bring it, and they come in. That's what it called, democracy. So, I mean, she has her opinion, okay, you either, but you should give the common courtesy to listen to what they have to say. And if you don't like it, you can leave, like, but you gotta get mad and let the person, go let the person finish. We have to stop that. We, as a, as a village, have to stop that. Let them finish doing what they have to say, go to the next person. No one is going to be a hundred percent agreeable on anything. No one. Yes, sir?
According to budgeting and staffing, the police department's budget for overtime was extremely low. Um, responsible is, was that you were gonna bring on part-timers and at staffing levels, hard on to mitigate there's a need for overtime. According to the contract that the police officers have, it does allow them to hire four part-timers.
Just one second. Sir, if you're going to stay stationary, that's fine. But now when you move, you look like you're trying to, uh, zone in on one particular person. If you, if you would stay stationary, fine, so I have no problem with that. But when you start pulling in, especially me, you have the mic on me all the time. I'm a public servant, I have no problem. But moving the mic around, or moving the camera around makes it look like you try to hold in, hold in on a certain person. I'm asking you, as a trustee, as a person that's trying to get back this meeting, please don't do that. I'm asking you, that's on tape. So all I can do is ask you not to move your camera around. This ain't Channel 7. Okay.
The police contract does allow for the hiring of part-timers. However, it does not include the fact that the police officers are required under contract rules to get the overtime offered to them first before the overtime is offered to a part-time. So how is that going to reduce overtime? That's the first question. And in, 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 kind of to segue off of what Larry was saying with respect to the crime statistics. Who's actually comparing crime statistics? What information are they taking that off of? And they say crime is down. They just had a rash of, of heartbreakings and, and people getting gas going on in their car. How is crime down? What planet are these people on? I mean, I'm getting reports from people throughout the community that stuff's going on, that the roads are being burglarized, and throughout the country it's burglarizing. Crime, crime's down, talk to them, where?
Okay, to answer, I'm gonna take the last thing first. The answer to your question about statistics, you absolutely right. It's up to the person that's taking the statistics, who's conducting the poll. Everyone here has heard about different Gallup polls as far as someone being elected to office, and they got their, 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 uh, leading by a certain percentage. But that person that's doing all this talking, it happens to be the person's candidate friend that's taking hold. Everything is great, put it back in, then you have an opposition that says, oh, no. They can always find statistics to justify what they're saying. Because they're the ones making the accusation and taking the polls. How many here has ever had someone call them up and say, hey, are you gonna vote for so-and-so? Maybe one or two. But they put it in, that the whole South Side voted for so-and-so. Same thing with crime. Police officers, now go on record, do not, do not stop crime. Reason being, if they're in an area and crime is happening over there, they're not stopping it. They deter by being in that area where you can see them. So you'd be crazy to try to commit crime when you're looking at a police officer. Some people do, but most people don't. So when they leave that area, then guess what? You know, if you're gonna commit that crime, you have a certain amount of time to do that, because he's dead enough. So sometimes it's not good to handle a police officer. You show him, and he's right there, looking at everybody, because he's not gonna stay there forever. So when he leaves, you plan on doing something, you can get away with it for a little bit. What stops crime? Are your neighbors. You. You stop crime. If you see something happen that's suspicious in your area where you live at, call the police. Call the police. You can call, now, let's say, hey, I think, if they, and this is something that I wish you guys would do, please, I'm asking you to do that. When you call the police and they ask you more questions than necessary, who are you, where you at, what's your address, name, what's your name? And you, you know, that, that, that's stupid. My, I live, the crime is happening at such and such address, please come out. You don't need to have a person to come out, especially a police officer, and tell your neighbor that he made the phone call. Now, guess what happens? They're gonna come, and they're gonna rash you, but they just found out that you called on them. And now they're gonna look around, police in around, throw a brick through your window. Now that deters you from ever calling again. That's not proper protocol. It shouldn't be that way. There's something happening at such and such address, can you dispatch? Call me back later, or whatever, you got my phone number. Call me back, where do y'all go? Excuse me, excuse me, we're trying to have a meeting. Please, please, uh, Mr. Shank, I've asked you, I asked you once, I'm asking you a second time. I'm, I'm asking the second time. Please don't do that. I'm asking you not to, sir. Please leave the camera stationary. If not, then I don't have to take an action. You don't want that to happen. I'm asking you, respect these people. So, anyway, you, you, you have to get involved in your neighborhood. You have to call and show that you will, because once you show you're a call, they're gonna go somewhere else. They might keep you up in here, it's hot over here, they call the police. Yes, you do. Yes, you do. That's what stops crime, your neighbors and yourself. See?
It's a wonderful speech which you're giving us. But I am a person and my husband who call the police all the time. I don't play games. If you're gonna do something wrong, I'm gonna call. They know we call. Even though we call, the police also tell them that we called. We've had our windows busted out on my daughter's car. We've had our tire cut. We've had a big gash in our car, and the alarm went off. So it's totally ungood that we call the police, but if they're there and they turn around and tell them who called anyway, what good is that?
That's what I'm talking about. And that's exactly what I said, when something like that happens.
But you know what, I don't care what they do to us, I will call to the day I die. If I see somebody out there, I will call. I'll go out there and I'll tell them to stop it. Because I seen somebody try to break into a home that was being sold. I said, you don't belong here. And I called the police, but they didn't get them in time. But I don't play that game. And people need not to play that game, no matter what the consequences are to you or your property. Stand up.
Yes, absolutely. But in answer to the question, which that is very serious, you have to live in that area, you have to live in your neighborhood. And for the police to, to point you out, that's wrong. And that's something that, those are the questions. When you come to the board meeting, you bring it up, and it's because you got the police chief sitting right there. You bring it up and say, sir, or man, whoever wants. Someone needs to answer, someone needs to tell me why the officers come out and identify me as the one that was called for the perpetrators that were in my house or in my neighborhood.
We've even had dispatchers say, oh, I know who this is. You're Mr. Ayers, Mr. Ayers.
Yes, I am.
See, that's, that, you'll see, that's what deters people from not calling.
That's right.
That's what deters them from not calling, because you're gonna be, you're gonna be identified. Now, if something happens and you leave, that person right there is the one that's doing it, and they call, you know, because your neighbors. That's why it's important to get your neighbors involved, talk to them. And I was hoping that we can get more people out, because together we can change things. But if we by ourselves, we can't do it. Yes, sir?
Well, what my wife was talking about, Dylan, you say get to know your neighbors?
Yes.
The neighbors tell everybody, don't talk to us, because we called the cops.
I don't know what to say, that's why. I don't know what to say, but I, I understand what you're saying. And I'm saying this, and then we're gonna adjourn, either you're part of the solution or you're part of the problem. If your neighbors are telling you that, guess what? They may be the ones that are actually doing what it is you're talking about, or those who's doing it that's close to them, and that's why it's happening.
Exactly.
So that, that, that you gotta look at. That you gotta look at. Okay, guys, I know it's time, and I, and I do promise that we can get out of here on a day, but remember I asked? I didn't fix me. Did you have any more questions? Nobody did. But it's happened, so that's okay. I appreciate you guys coming out. Next month, um, hopefully you all can bring more people, and hopefully we can, the public, you young people, that we can, um, browbeat, um, um, browbeat our, um, I'm sorry, our Parks and Recs director. And then we can also go to the village and try to get something, so we can set up something for you guys. I like what you did. Everyone else, thank you very much, enjoy your rest of the month, and we'll be talking to you. Thank you.